This is the March 8th, 2022 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. We are going to go out of the order on the agenda today. We have Jim Merritt, the building commissioner, here with us, who is going to talk about some things related to the building.
Thank you. As we quickly proceed, when we were looking at the windows, we know have some issues. One of the issues we have is that the top sash is so heavy. When you open the bottom sash, the top sash has a tendency to drop. We took care, we thought we took care of that for the most part a number of years ago by simply putting stops in to keep the upper sash together. But even the lower sash, the windows are so large that I understand from the staff, they have a hard time opening them and then maybe sometimes even closing them. So that was one of the reasons why we thought maybe it would be a good idea to take a look at beginning to replace them. With the windows being the only issue really relative to having an energy assessment made of the building.
And the pricing on that tended to be?
Yeah, when we took a look, they actually gave us three different, all from the same manufacturing, but different elevated from what they call the ultimate to the essential. And the ultimate is being basically $2,300 apiece. The essential being $1,200 apiece. I asked the salesman, why is one actually twice as good as the other? I didn't get a response back, but they're still top of the line Marvin windows is what they priced. We could price other manufacturers. All window styles have gotten better over the years, so we could continue to take a look at that to see what may be the best fit. So if we were to do one side at a time, if we started with the front of the building, the middle grade window would be $15,000 to replace all 10 windows in the front. That's not a bad price, but that, you know, that's for easily a lifetime window. There's always 20 years on the glass. If you have glass that lasts 20 years, that's really a lifetime. I won't be worrying about it at that point in time. I know there are some people here who might be, but they generally will last much, much longer than that. The type of window that we've looked at, I actually have in my own house. They've been there over 20 years. They're still fully functioning. It's still looking good. These are fiberglass windows, so they would never need maintenance. And I think that's kind of what we should be going towards is no maintenance or lowest maintenance we possibly can get. And as far as that's concerned, I think that's really all I have. I actually brought a window. There's all kinds of specifications that they gave me here. And I actually brought a sample. It's in the car. I could go get it, but probably is too premature to begin to take a look at that. Now, I think we need to maybe look at some other things first. One of the other things that the biggest concern that I've had for a while is having a supplemental heat source for the building. When and if the building ever gets to a point where it loses electricity. The generator that we've brought over here was a generator that ran the Parting Way's building when the police station was there. It was adequate for that. It moved from there then to the Council on Aging, and it was adequate for that. We've replaced all of those generators with new up-to-date generators that are really way over size because at the same time, we've gone back to take a look at the energy efficiency of all those buildings. We replaced them, all the CFL and all incandescent lighting with all LED lighting. And I remember when we were looking at the renovation of this building, when I first talked to the engineer, because the electrician wanted to know, he said, "What do I need for circuitry to put all the lighting in this building on?" And the engineer said, "Well, let me go calculate it back, and I'll call you back." And he called me back in about 10 minutes. You can put all the lights in the building on 115 amp breaker, which is like the essential smallest breaker that you actually put into a residence now, which was really good news. That means the building's just been that efficient for as long as it's been here. It also means that you could turn all the lights on with a very small generator. But the thing that we are missing here is that the electric HVAC and the heat is all electric. All the air source heat pumps, they use a lot more than that generator could probably handle. So I guess then the question is, is that would we want to go out and price a generator to handle all of that? Or would we want to use the one that's here? And maybe take a look at a supplemental heating system? If there's no electricity for the building, my imagination would tell me that the building's not open. But we do want to supply, you know, at least a minimum amount of heat to the building. And we could certainly turn on all the lights and provide enough power, you know, for the computer software. So maybe staff would be coming in. In the wintertime, they'd probably be wearing coats, but... So I have spoken to the electrician. He was supposed to get an estimate back to me. I really have to say, that's my fault. I didn't give him much time to do an analysis. There's a transfer switch that was purchased years ago when the generator was at the COA. We have that still, so there's really not much equipment to purchase. It would be mostly labor and a small sub-panel to put those minimum amounts of light on. And speaking with him, he thought that maybe we wouldn't even have to go with supplemental heat because the heats in the two or the three entrances are independent of the rest of the system. And he says, "There's probably enough power that generated to operate those," which I thought was actually a pretty good thought. And I think at least officially, or initially, that's how we would want to proceed. The other way I was thinking initially is because there's still gas tanks or oil tanks in the basement, was looking at a small heater, which really they use in mobile homes. I actually have one in my shop at home, and my shop is 28 by 56, which is half the size of the building, but it'll heat the shop in about 20 minutes. And I find it to be extremely efficient. But the other issue is that we, you know, oil costs are going up rapidly. One of the things that we actually have here, though, is we have on the benefit of a gas line right outside the building, which the utility actually put in by mistake. But, you know, we could energize that and have them put a meter on it, hook it up, you know, to a small gas-fired heater, and it would use that much less electricity to provide quite a bit of warmth to the building if we felt that that was necessary. Did it cover everything?
You did. Thank you. I think part of the concern in the past about the heat is more... So because again, you're right, if the power is out and it's that bad, most likely staff is not going to be here in the building.
Right.
So the idea was for more, at least I remember way back when it was discussed, was more along the ideas of not wanting the pipes to freeze.
Correct. Right.
So something that would allow the building to have enough warmth for that.
Yeah, a loss of heat in any capacity is not good, you know, for a building, even if there wasn't pipes.
Sure.
You just don't want that to happen. But I just felt that, you know, some type of supplemental heat for the basic systems would be very beneficial.
Right, right, which I appreciate. Appreciate that thought, yeah. But I think, yeah, definitely the highest concern is the heat versus the computer.
Right.
But that's, yeah, and that's, those three units do run independently from the system. That is correct. Because those are the ones that I shut off in the spring. Because there's no reason to have the heat running in this when the temperature hits a certain degree. So you and I had determined that a few years back. Otherwise, because the time we discovered that was because the heat was on on those three units in like July. It's like, why is this on? Hey, good question. Why is it on? So, you know, now I turn them off in April and turn them back on in October. But certainly, you know, I don't know how warm that keeps. It certainly keeps it warm enough.
I think it would keep it warm enough, especially with outside the bathrooms. There's not that much of a chance for freezing the pipes that are actually in the basement, because the basement really is subterranean. There's a constant thermal generation from that of 52 degrees. You know, your ground temperature always maintains around 52 degrees. So anything up here, I think, would keep those pipes from freezing. And of course, if we're running the generator, why not run it at maximum? Because what we don't use is just being wasted anyways.
Right.
I have a few questions. So the, so if we used the existing generator that we have, the small one, we would be able to, if I'm understanding correctly, do all the lights and the three sources of heat for the doorways?
Correct.
That would take care of everything? And it would be set up so that it would go on automatically? So if the library loses power, no one has to turn it on, no one has to shut it off?
Right, it would go on automatically.
Automatically, okay.
Usually, they set them up so that they also run at least once a week for a short period of time, just to keep the system up and running. That doesn't mean, you know, you put it on a switch and it'll go on, but it won't generate anything in the building unless the building's actually calling for it.
Okay.
And, you know, I think the only thing is, is that the generator here really hasn't been run in a number of years. So it would either, you know, there's a company that we use to do all the maintenance on the other generators, which is on the bridge in the bed for Ari Mitchell.
Okay.
I think they initially ran that, and I'd probably have them come back. It may be a $300 cost to have them come and service it and run it for the first time.
And what do you think would be the cost to, I mean, other than obviously have them service it, what are we talking about, like a ballpark figure to get this generator up and running? I guess you could say, running.
I don't know yet.
Okay. No, that's all right. That's fair.
Checking for response.
Nope, that's fair. That's fair. So but we're just waiting for the electrician, because like you said, we have the generator, we have the switch.
There it is.
Ah, there you go.
$2,900.
$2,900. Hey, that's like a magic phone. That's really good.
That was pure coincidence.
Sure. So $2,900 plus the $300, you know, maintenance fee?
Right.
To get, to make sure that everything, you know, is good to go. And then, so included in that maintenance fee, like if they found something, does that include like fixing it or no? That just includes like taking a look at it to make sure it's good, or they clean like?
They would probably come and run it through its paces and get it operative. I don't believe they would tell me that, you know, if there's really anything majorly wrong with it. If they can't get it going, there may be, you know, to put one back in that place to handle what we want to have here would probably be $5,000 or $6,000 for brand new one.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Just want to follow up. So with the existing one, to have that run, you would tap into the line that was put here accidentally? Like that's what it would be attached to, and then we'd have a meter put on that?
No, because that one is oil-fired. It's diesel.
Oh, that's the one. Okay, okay.
So what we would do would be to tap into the tanks that are down here.
With the existing generator?
Yes.
So that's what, so then we'd be using the oil?
Then we'd be using the oil.
Yeah, I really...
That was one of the reasons why I thought, you know, the oil-fired mobile home heater would be the better way to do it. So you'd supply the heat to both of them.
Is there any other option for it without using oil?
No, it's that you can't convert a diesel-fired generator.
Okay. Because I don't think the board knew that at the time, that the generator got moved here. Because I don't think that the prior chair would have agreed to that, because she was very adamant about not, well, in fact, they were trying to get those oil tanks removed at that time. So I don't know how people feel about using them now, but I'm just putting that out there, because then the oil...
Well, then maybe we should take a look at going ahead and changing it out to gas and using, you know, the LNG that's here.
Because that becomes a whole other expense with the oil. And then the oil just sitting in there, if we're not, say if we have a time where we don't need to use the generator, then the oil, you know. And that creates a whole other maintenance issue if, you know, the oil's just sitting in there.
Right.
And the tank that also hasn't been used in many years, or either of those tanks.
Well, like you say, the generators are set up so that they cycle once a week anyways.
Right, right. But still, it probably doesn't require too much in order to do that.
No, not over the short period of time that it does.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's something that, just to think about, you know, if we want to do that in terms of oil. Maybe we are better off doing, getting something else altogether that wouldn't require...
Whether it's a brand-new generator or the heat, I mean, could we do a heater option that wasn't oil? What's our other option?
Well, I think the deal really is, is to, we could go, because we have the gas line here, we could, you'd want to go either oil for both or gas for both. But that's, that's not a gas-fired generator, so that's...
Yeah, see, I don't, yeah, I have a feeling that that, you know, the generator that's here now, just, you know, was loosely discussed and then was sort of just moved here by previous town administration without really much discussion with the board. And I don't think the prior board was going hell about that because of some experiences with oil at the old building and, you know, that whole thing. I think we've all been happy not to have to deal with that since being here. So gas, gas for both, you're, so you're being, that, in other words, though, what you're saying is that that would power the, like the existing generator could power something if we went, if it was, could it be converted to gas? Because then you're saying with the heater option, you're still talking about a generator kicking on that heater.
Correct.
Right. So if, but if the generator had to kick on the heater, then couldn't we just have the generator kick on the power to the building period? Like eliminate the heater?
Yep.
Yes.
Right, because the three, the heat from the three entrances would, could take care of it. So we wouldn't need the heater. Is that...
Okay.
But if we do that, we'd have to get a new generator? Because we can't use the existing one, right?
Well, if you don't want to use oil, right?
Right, so gas, in order to get, in order for us to use gas, we would need to get a new generator.
Which would be $5,000 to $6,000.
Which would be $5,000 to $6,000. Or we could do the oil, but then you have the $300 maintenance fee, the $2,900 to do it, but then you have the oil.
Then you have to buy the oil.
And then you have to figure out about the oil sitting in there.
Well, even if you go to gas, you'll still have the $2,900.
Okay.
Even with a brand-new generator?
Yeah, because that's just the labor to hook up the panel and the wire.
So the brand-new generator is $5,000 to $6,000 plus $2,900.
Correct.
Just to say, we've been here for six years and haven't needed a generator.
No, no.
I mean, not saying, I mean, this is why we brought it up, though, is because we did lose power this past year, and we didn't have a backup power source. And you'd hate to see that happen in the winter. I mean, it happened in the fall that we lost power for, I think it was two days.
Two days?
Yeah, it was, or it was like one day into the next day. It bled into a two-day time period with that big storm. Yes, the big windstorm, yep. Yeah, I think we were closed one day, but we lost power on the first day.
I think with the way the weather systems are, I think it's something that we really should consider. And I was fortunate that it was in the fall.
Correct, right, that's, but that's what prompted this, you know, need to get this figured out, because we hate to see that happen in the winter, obviously.
Is there anything else that you could, that you thought of or that you saw for, you know, that the building needed or we should be thinking about?
Deana has talked to me about the canopy up the front. And, you know, it's, it's an ornate architectural feature of the front of the building. It would be nice to replace it the way it is.
It's damaged. I mean, that's, like, there's like birds that now get in there and everything, so it's not just replaced.
It's something that I think we could do in-house and replace. If we had to go out, you know, my fear is that the cost to replace it would be like $15,000 to $17,000.
Wow.
And I think we could do it in-house for $1,000.
Okay.
But the one thing that we did talk about that, you know, I think I would need to talk to, or you all would need to talk to the historical commissioners, whether or not it needs to stay looking like it does now with, because it is a historical building with Marie S. Howard being on that sign-out front. How, does it need to be replicated to look like that? And I don't know that answer, and Jim and I, I don't think you know either, right?
Well, I think if we were to do it, we would make it look as...
You would make it look in-house, okay.
That's what I said, when we first talked, we could take it down and put a canvas canopy on it.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we technically have to do it.
I mean, you probably could do it as a temporary, like we're fixing it type of thing.
I don't think so.
No.
But I can also find that. The historical commission happens to be meeting here on Thursday, so I can check with them on Thursday.
Okay, just to, just to see. And there was nothing else that you just think...
No, I'm pretty sure if you're going to check with the historical commission, you have to replace it exactly the way it is.
Well, I'd rather know that first.
And can you still do that in-house?
I'd rather know that first, though, then replace it, and then find out.
Right. And then find out that you can.
You know, even if it's a couple of years from now.
And everything's going well with the pavilion?
Yes. We're just waiting right now for the weather to get a little bit warmer so they can get out.
Right, right.
You know, I was asked by a town administrator to turn one office into two, so that's what they've been doing historically, whatever. You know, once, I'm going to hope it gets warm in a couple of weeks. But yeah, we'll have it ready for when you want to start doing, you know, programming out there.
So if we want to start doing programming on April 6th, it'll be ready.
Yes.
Yeah, no. No, but that's, we would like to start doing programming in April, at some point in April, and at the very latest, the beginning of May, because we're losing out on a lot of opportunities for programs. Some other libraries are already doing programs indoors.
Well, there are some small things there that we could do after the fact, even though you're doing programming. One of the things I'm concerned about is having swallows nested in there.
Yep.
So they, you know, they have these little things that you can put up there to prevent them from nesting on the shelves and stuff like that, which we could do at almost any time. But yeah, we'll concentrate on finishing off the turf. And Dan, once he'll, you know, it's, you know, they'll start paving again pretty soon. He'll get that done, and we'll get electricity out there.
You still going to do a railing on the back of the stage, if you would?
We certainly can. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I had thought that we had to because of, for safety reasons, but...
No, it's not high enough. It doesn't drop.
Oh, okay. I thought that's why we had talked about it.
No, over 30 inches.
Oh, all right, well then.
But... I guess the only concern really would be is if you have people facing a crowd out front, and they're moving back and forth, or just back up, or somebody falling off the other side.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know exactly what the added cost would be to do that, but I can find that out for you.
Okay.
And we're only talking really a few hundred dollars, it's not...
And then, other than that, all that big stuff. But we had just talked about perhaps getting chains for the deck to rope off the deck, so when it snows, that would be...
I actually bought signs already for that.
Oh, okay, all right. And then the crack in the front walkway? We still think that that can be fixed in-house, too, by filling that crack? I don't know if you've all noticed that, but it runs across, it's cracked since 2016, but the crack now runs the entire length of the front walkway up by the compass. Yeah, when you get to the compass at the front door, there's a crack, like literally right before the compass. So it's just gotten, you know, this past year is when it's made its full way across. But when Jim and I were walking around, one thing he pointed out was that because it's a little bit wider now, it might be easier to fill than perhaps a few years ago when it was a tighter, thinner crack. But it has widened quite a bit.
Yeah, there's, there's a company that makes special epoxies for that. It's called Sikaflex. It comes and mixes in the tube, and it fills it. And it's made specifically for concrete, so we can, we can do that. It just needs to be a little bit warmer.
Okay, that's great.
And it warms back to the heating part, right? Because it's a heated walkway, okay.
And then Deana also mentioned to me the railing going into the basement, which we'll take care of also.
Yeah, it's a two-by-four right now, so it's not really a regular rail that anyone can hold on to when they're trying to carry things up and down. So that'll be great.
Well, I think you'll be busy for a while. Not like you're not normally busy, because you are always doing something.
He's been doing something for this building for eight years.
Well, it was for the meeting today. I don't know if you'd happen to notice, but I had made a list of all the stuff that we still need to do for all the other buildings, too. So, yeah, my guys will be busy, which they like.
Right, absolutely. Does anybody have any other questions, building-related questions for Jim? Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Brian.
And everything that you do for us in the library and the town.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
You too. Thanks, take care.
We're going to go back to the top of the notice, and we're going to... First item is the review and approval of the minutes from February 8th. Does anybody have anything for those minutes?
I'd like a motion to accept 30 minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next is the budget. So I think it's pretty straightforward, not too different from the last time we met. That's 63.9% spent out for salary, 91.1% spent out for operating, for a total of 69.2%. I had mentioned at the last meeting that we would be spending out the material line within the next few weeks of, or a couple of weeks from that meeting, which we did clearly. The office supplies line also now spent out since that meeting. In terms of the materials line, I, you know, do just want to point out or remind, I guess, that that's what happens every year around this time, that we spend out the money appropriated from the town. And so right now, as of March 2nd, material spending has shifted to our gift fund, which this fiscal year, we've gotten about $5,700 to the gift fund. So that's what I'm currently using for material. And once that's gone, I'll switch over to the state aid account. But other than that, I think everything is pretty status quo, unless you have any specific questions about it.
I didn't see anything. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
We just need a motion.
Motion to accept the finance report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that's like twenty-three budget for all business?
So, as you know, we presented to the finance committee, I met with the town administrator, or, excuse me, the interim town administrator, two times, I believe, about the budget. I presented to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen at that meeting. Mr. Gaspar indicated that this would be a difficult year for the full-time position to come to fruition. They did not vote on it at that meeting, I'm not sure if you watched it or not, but they didn't vote on it. And soon after, I was called back into the town administrator, interim town administrator's office to discuss the budget again, he asked me to remove the salary portion of the full-time position from the additional budget that we submitted. I take it very seriously that that is your budget, I mean, you are my board, you're not just an advisory board to me, you're a supervisory board, and it's very much your budget. So I was not willing to remove that without speaking to you all first, because maybe you don't want to remove it. It has since been removed, I've been told, he's removed it, which, it's his budget, I guess, so he has the ability to do that. So he's removed the sixteen thousand five fifty-seven from the salary, library tech salary line. So I don't know how you all feel about that. I think it's, you know, important to note that, first of all, I wouldn't remove it without speaking with you all, which is why I didn't remove it, so I've noted that. But second of all, I think it's very difficult to present a budget that isn't supported by the Board of Selectmen or isn't supported by the finance committee. I'm not sure whether or not the finance committee supports that request because they haven't voted yet. But, you know, the interim town administrator has indicated that, you know, the finance committee is an advisory board, and that the budget that gets, you know, introduced to the selectmen, his budget that gets proposed to the selectmen is the budget that matters. And I don't know that you all want to go back to the selectmen and try again, or you want to go to the finance committee and see what can be done, I mean, I'm just not sure. I, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I, you know, I said I totally understand that this might not be the right time. And if it's not the right time, it's not the right time, but that doesn't mean that we don't need the position, which is the other reason why I don't want to just remove it from the budget, because if we just remove it from the budget, to me, that indicates we don't need it or want it. And I think we do need it and want it, which is why it went into that budget request. So I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that, how you want to move forward, if you want to officially remove it, I don't even know if it matters if you officially remove it or not at this point, because it's been taken out, so, but I'm not sure how you want to proceed with that. Try again another time, I don't know. It's a, it's a little discouraging.
Yeah.
In the way that it's been handled, just to say, and I mean, I've, I always have very much taken the finance committee's votes very seriously, that's the way it was always introduced to me from the board that hired me, and it's, I don't know, you know, if they'll feel differently and if it will matter, I don't know. Like, I'm not sure what their, I don't, I don't know.
So if we say we want to put it back in there, then it's going to go at the town meeting?
Well, for, the interim town administrator, Mr. Kelly, did say that you could go to the selectmen's meeting when he proposes the budget and say that you want to put it back in. You could go to the finance committee and say that you want to keep it in, and then you could go on the floor at town meeting and, without it being there, you'd have to hold when the budget came, came up, you'd have to call a hold, and then you would have to provide a funding source of how to pay for the position. So it's not just the sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars, it's also the benefits that would come with that, which, you know, was quoted twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, and then thirty thousand to forty thousand dollars, has been a range of, between that twenty-five to forty thousand, that would be the additional expense. And, and he says right now that this isn't a funding source for that. So on the floor at town meeting, you would have to give a funding source, and I'm not sure how you'd know what that funding source is, you know, how you'd be given that information, I don't know where that comes from. But that is how it would work. And then there's still a chance that, you know, unless you have people that you know are going to vote for it at town meeting, that it could get turned down on the floor at town meeting. And I think it might be difficult to go for it at town meeting without the support of the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee, which, you want them to support your budget. I mean, I don't think anyone wants to get up to defend something that isn't being supported. Yeah, that's, that's what I know about it, and what would have, what would be the next steps.
Any thoughts? What do we think?
Seems like the handwriting is on the wall.
Did they give you any encouragement that next year would be better?
No.
Yeah.
No, no. And I think even, I mean, I think it would be very easy to say that any year it's going to be difficult, every, I mean, every year since I've been here, there's been difficulties with the budget, especially the past three years with COVID. So I almost feel if I was told that, oh, try again next year, I mean, which, you know, that's basically been said, try again next year, but next year, there's going to be another reason why.
What if we worked this year to figure out if it gets shut down again next year, what a funding source could be? So we would already have that information.
In plan.
Or some thoughts in place.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Like the presentation was to the.
Right.
We could, yeah, I think that's wise, that's the wise thing.
Maybe talk to FinCom?
Yeah.
Or someone at FinCom to see if we can, you know, figure out what the options would be, but like you said, not, you know, just leave it how it is now, where it's not in there, and then do the footwork for.
Be better prepared.
For next year.
With that funding source.
Mm-hmm. Like you said, I think we're at a, we're at a roadblock if we try to go, what are we going to do, go without it? And I don't think there's enough time.
Right.
To try to figure that out now.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, I mean, that's a good option. You know, and they, I mean, especially if they vote, because we are, we know that FinCom has, has not voted yet, and so if they vote, because we presented it with the, you presented it, with the sixteen thousand dollars in there, so when they vote on the budget, if they vote for it, then they may have some idea about where that would come from.
Right.
Potentially, right? Because they, they're, they're, they don't know that he, that the interim town administrator took it out, as I would think.
I don't know if they know or not, and I don't know what, when they vote on a final budget or they recommend, I think that's what the terminology is, they recommend a final budget, I don't know if they're recommending what the Board of Selectmen has already approved.
Right.
Or, so I'm not sure if they're going to see, but I don't know if they know that it's been taken out, and I don't know if they'll see a budget and, you know, they just won't, maybe someone won't remember. You know, this is well over a month ago that we did this presentation, so, you know, by the time they see it, I, I have no idea what they end up, I would imagine they have to look at the same figures that the Board of Selectmen are looking at, I would imagine. Like, I don't think they're going to approve one thing and then the Board of Selectmen approve something else so that.
There, I have to say that the people on the FinCom are very like, why does this number doesn't, doesn't, you know, why doesn't this match this?
Right.
And they have their binders and they've got their, so they've got what you've already presented, so I'm sure that once they're looking at, they're really, I mean, at, at least the, you know, the meetings that I've watched, they're really number-oriented where they're, so.
Sure, and I don't disagree with you at all.
Right, right.
I respect the finance committee immensely, so I don't agree with anything that you're saying, however, I don't know how that plays out.
Right.
We haven't been in this situation before.
Exactly.
So I don't know how that plays out when it gets to the end.
Right.
Because they must look at the same exact figures that the Board of Selectmen are looking at.
Right.
By the end. So I'm not sure.
How they get, right, how they get to the last figures.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I was just, you know, pointing out that I think that they, you know, they would probably notice a difference, now how they get there, you know, is a different story, but, I mean.
When does this decision have to be, amade or agreed to?
I'm not sure when the budget's being presented to the selectmen, and I'm not sure of the FinCom's schedule, I mean, it's, it's coming up quickly, I know that much, because it needs to be turned in by a certain time, but I don't know the, like, the dates. But it is coming up soon.
So is it worthwhile to meet with either the full committee or with the one person that we have who came to see what our options are?
I have no idea, we've never been in this position before, so I really don't know if it's, I mean, the, our liaison, Eric Chu, knows that this has happened, so he's been informed that this was happening, but I don't know if that's been shared with the rest of the finance committee, I don't know if other departments have since revised their budgets or been asked to revise their budgets, I'm not sure.
Is that the only thing that they took off the budget?
Yes.
All right, so you want, you want to know if that budget that the finance committee would approve or disapprove is going to include the fifteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand five fifty-seven, yeah.
Okay, so you want to know that. And you also want to know if it's included, is that the same one that the selectmen's?
Well, I know the selectmen are not voting on a budget that includes it, I know that, it's, yeah, the town administrator is presenting his budget, which will not include the sixteen thousand five fifty-seven. I would imagine the finance committee then gets what the selectmen have approved, or I imagine they're going to get a copy of the town administrator's budget, I think there's a joint meeting that happens at some point, but I haven't seen anything like that posted yet. But I'm just, it's, we haven't had this happen, that something we've put in has been taken out without us taking it out. So that's what I'm, I guess what I'm basically asking today is, do you want to take that out formally, even though it's already been taken out, but that you are aware that it's been taken out and you're, you know, we will try again another time? Or do you want to go for this, or I think you brought up a really good point, we don't have the information. If you had to get on the floor at town meeting, you don't know what the funding sources, and I don't know how you find that out, like, I just don't know, I don't know if the finance committee can help you with that, maybe the school committee can help you with that, because they had to do that last year.
Oh.
So maybe it's talking to the school committee is an option, because they had to present funding sources last year, I don't know, like, I really don't know how you find it out. I can find it out for you, I just don't know at this moment how to find it out. And I don't know how much you want to fight that right now either, I mean, the town is in a difficult position, I think financially right now, is probably a lot of towns are, because we're coming off of a two-year pandemic, so maybe it's not the right time to ask for something that comes with a pretty hefty price tag.
So maybe if we approve to taking, if we say yes, take it off, it looks like we approve of that, when we really don't, so maybe we shouldn't take it off. It's already off, I mean, it's, it's a done deal.
Just we leave it on, but let, but let, let it be presented that the town administrator removed it.
Okay.
And I, I think if that's the route that you choose, which I totally understand what you're saying with that, then I also think maybe you need a memo sent to the Board of Selectmen and to the finance committee that lets them know that you are aware that it was removed, but that's not something that, you know, you all want, just so that they're aware of why it was removed. I mean, the finance committee, if they do see that it's been removed, which I imagine they will, they might think that we just decided to take it off, that's one of my concerns, and I'm, we didn't decide that, so. You know, I think that it's totally within the board's ability to send a memo stating, we understand that it's been taken off, but, you know, if it needs to be taken off, okay, we'll see you next year.
Is it considered a full-time?
It's a sixteen thousand five fifty-seven would have made it a full-time, a thirty-five-hour-a-week position, that was the funds we needed to bump a nineteen-hour position to a thirty-five-hour-a-week position. So there was already, there's already existing funds in the budget that fund the nineteen hours, just trying to get it up to the thirty-five hours, so that's what that figure covers. But the other piece is the benefits. Which doesn't come out of our budget.
The nineteen hours go up to what?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And the other thing that was suggested was to add another part-time position with that request, because another part-time position wouldn't mean having to add benefits. But the downside to another part-time position is that we are already a staff of ten people, so we don't need to be a staff of eleven people, and we can't, you can't have a children's librarian split in two, that's just not a, you know, if you want that to be a successful position, it's best to have it as one full-time person versus two people doing part-time work and never working together to, you know, fill that time in. So I, when that was suggested, I said I didn't think that was in the library's best interest, and I stand completely by that. You know, we have eight part-time library technicians, excuse me, seven part-time library technicians, which is plenty for a small library like ours.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it in like it is, like we had already approved it, knowing that it was already been taken out by the interim town administrator, and we will send a memo to the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom describing that we, we, we understand that it's been removed, but we still feel like it's a, it's a want slash need, and we will be back to request it in the future, in so many words. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, prior to it going in this year, I mean, I've been told numerous times that we're, by different town administrators, you're never going to get a full-time position. The previous town administrator had given that spark of hope, and unfortunately, she left before this all came to fruition, but she believed very much in the position and believed in the importance of it, and I think if we could convince a future town administrator, whether that be this current interim town administrator or someone else in the future, I think if we could get that person's support, then it would be much easier to.
Right.
Get the position in the future. I think that person would find the funding source if, you know, that was the case. And that could be the person who's here now, he may be in the future, he would feel a little differently, but I think right now, there's so many other things to be looking at.
Okay. Anybody have anything else with that, with that topic? If not, we'll move on to the next. Is there anything else that, anybody have anything to discuss about, anything that Jim talked about, or pretty much good with all that stuff?
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe get some official figures from him and then discuss that.
And then we'll discuss in individual pieces and, and, sounds good. Okay, we have, next on the agenda is the purchase and installation of new Wi-Fi access points and a router.
So I forwarded along the sales quote from GovConnect and the job specifics, as I mentioned, Nicholas Monticello, who is doing IT right now for the town, along with Tony Duarte, who's, works for EMA, they came to do a tour of the building and to look at our current Wi-Fi, which is failing, as you know, from our Zoom calls, where I have not been able to have successful interactions with you via Zoom, without dropping out, freezing, and my own mind. I would say the Wi-Fi has definitely declined over the past year, which was predicted by the former IT director that we would have an issue with this soon, and the time is here. So Tony and Nick did a walkthrough with me, and we also discussed, we have issues right now with Wi-Fi connectivity on the deck, we've had not great Wi-Fi on the bath lawn, so with this plan that they proposed, that will fix the issues for the deck, and it will also give us Wi-Fi out to the pavilion, which I think.
I think that's important.
I think, yes, very important, yep, I agree completely. It also, they proposed two lines of Wi-Fi, so. so that the staff can be on a secure line for Wi-Fi, separate from the public. Right now, if staff is on Wi-Fi, we're on the same line as the public. So they highly recommended having that split. And I think that's great too. Not, I mean, staff isn't on the Wi-Fi all that much, but occasionally we have to go on there. So the total for the parts and the labor, which because it's technically being done in-house by someone from the EMI, that reduces what the normal labor cost would be. So we're looking at $1,992.74.
I think that's well worth it for everything that they're going to do on this list.
Right.
I mean, that seems like it would, and it's going to fix the, you know, fix the problems in numerous places.
Right.
So, I mean, I think it's, I mean, that sounds like a really good.
I think so too.
Yeah, we currently have about $43,000 in the gift fund for the new building. So this could certainly come from the funds, you know, those gift funds.
Okay.
So be, you know, no impact to the appropriated budget. And we wouldn't need to get an article at town meeting, which I would imagine people appreciate. And it wouldn't hurt any, you know, do anything affect our state aid, you know, balance or anything like that. So I think it's a perfect use of the funds remaining for the new building.
And how long do they think this will last, like a while?
Um, so they said that the access points, you know, could technically have a seven to 10-year range. Like, working, like, these were put in in late 2014. Actually, maybe they ended up being put in in early 2015. So they lasted about seven years. So he says that we could probably get seven to 10 years with this system. Which would be great. All right. The only thing on the project items list that I would consider changing is he, Tony had talked about having a password put on the guest network. Right now, there is no password. People can just hop on. And at the time when we were talking, I said, oh, yeah, that would be great. But then, thinking about it a little bit more, and I know that this wouldn't, changing that wouldn't impact the cost at all. Wouldn't do anything less than it. But we do have people who just pull into the bot to use Wi-Fi. And if they didn't know the password, they'd have done, you know, we could certainly advertise the password in the library, but somebody outside of the library might not think to come up to a door to see if there was a password noted on a door. Or, you know, maybe they're not regular users. So I'm kind of now rethinking that whole password option.
Do they use it when the library's not even open?
Yes. Which, though, though, you know, when COVID started, that was looked at as a huge plus by the library world that we could say, we have Wi-Fi and you can get that 24/7 when you're coming by, as just looking at it as another digital service. So, you know, it doesn't cost us any more or less if people are using it outside of the library's normal hours. So I think if you're looking at it as a digital resource that could be really helpful to someone, then I don't think it's a bad thing. But certainly, there is that question of, well, do you, do you offer that kind of service when you're not open to the public? You know, that certainly is a debatable topic. But certainly, in March of 2020, it was looked at as like, oh, that's amazing because if people park on the north side of the building, which we did advertise, you can get our Wi-Fi from right outside, you know, in our parking lot, even though the library building is closed. So.
Do you not remember years ago, seeing people on the vineyard on a Sunday, sitting there using the Wi-Fi?
Mm-hmm.
So, like, has it ever been a problem? Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
No, the only, we do, we've gotten two letters maybe in six years from Comcast about people doing, trying to download, like, pirating movies, basically.
Oh, okay.
So we've gotten two letters indicating that do not do that. Unfortunately, you know, how can we tell them? We don't know who's doing it. Like, it's, we're not a residence. We're a, you know, public library. But that's only two times in six years.
Would there be any other risk to security to having an open network like that?
Not that, I mean, we've had, it's been open the whole time and we haven't had a problem.
And you would know if other places had that.
Right, and it's kind of a mixed bag. It's like half and half. Some libraries require a password and others have an open network. So, I mean, I can certainly talk about that with Tony again and whether or not he thinks it's absolutely necessary, especially where the staff will be running on a different line or SSID. Like, I, you know, I could certainly ask him if what he thinks, you know, the risk guard that. But it was one of those, you know, in the moment, I was like, oh, yeah, sure, that would be fine. And then later on, I was like, no, 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 wait a second. What does that mean for, those vehicles I see parked here when I pull in in the morning that are, you know, I know are just, have hopped on the Wi-Fi for a few minutes?
And then you have to think, if people are out in the pavilion, they're going to want to hop on the Wi-Fi.
Right.
That's true.
If they don't have access to the password, that's.
Right, that's something else too. You know, unless we have something posted out there that, you know, lets people know what the password is. But, you know, I could definitely run that by them again and see like, is that something that they highly recommend that we do? And maybe we try it out and if we start to get, I don't know.
I think my question would be, if you're going to post the password, why have a password?
Well, right.
Does it change, like, do you change it every week?
Right, like, if you're going to post signs with the password out there, then.
It's not really password.
Why, correct, correct. Which is like, I mean, any hotel, I think, that you go to, you know, has it, has that, you know, when you check in, you know what the password is. And two years later, you go back and it's the same password as that it was. I mean, I think one important thing for people to remember is that when they're using, even if it's a secure line and you're using public anything, there is risk to that. You know, there is, it's not like you're at home on your computer. But you're right, if the password's posted everywhere, then what's the point of having a password?
Yeah.
That's a very valid point, right?
And if it seems to be working fine without one, then why would we?
And again, like, as far as I know, you know, we, I don't really count those two, two letters we've gotten. We haven't gotten a letter in a long time. But even that, I don't really count as an issue because it's just due time, you know? No, please, no, don't come here now and try.
Illegal download things.
I got it. Oh, you got it. Sure.
So, yeah, if you like the proposal, you'll just need to make a motion to accept it.
I made the motion to accept that proposal.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make sure I let Nick know and I'll get started on that. That'll be great.
Did he say how long it was going to take?
Well, right now, it's just not known how long it's going to take to get the equipment. Because everything is back-ordered everywhere. So there could be a slight delay from that. But I know he did say he would get on it right away. So that hopefully it won't be too bad.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is the maximum number of people allowed in the community room.
So this morning, I was at a department head meeting and the interim TA had requested that the meeting be held here. But because we have a current limit of 10 people, I said that that wasn't going to work this morning because of the 10 people, there were more than 10 department heads. Of, a few, quite a few more than 10. So when that came up, I said, well, it's probably a good time to revisit the limits we have on the room. The capacity pre-COVID was 49. When we reopened the room in the fall, it was 10. So I don't know if you want to drop restrictions altogether and just have the room open for business as usual? Or maybe you'd prefer just going up a little bit to 20 or 25 and seeing how that goes for now? I mean, you know, currently, as of today, we're still required to wear masks in the building per the policy of the board of selectmen back from, that went into effect September 1st. They are meeting next week. And it's supposed to be on the agenda to discuss making masks optional for the library. So I don't know if, you know, masks optional comes into play, if you don't want to increase it. You know, there's, we met at a different town building today. There is, I think, like around, I'd say 16 to 18 of us. No one had a mask on. So, I mean, I think, you know, even big, bigger places now aren't requiring you to wear a mask when you're in there and there are no capacity limits. So, you know, I think it is time to address it in some way. But whether or not you want to just lift restrictions altogether is up to you. I mean, the staff, just to, you know, let you know, we're still not talking about resuming programs indoors yet. So regardless of what happens with your decision, it doesn't mean we're going to start storytime in here with 30 people next week. We've got to work up to that, I think. Especially because we have a new person who's not done storytime before in the children's room assistant position. So I think we'll most likely be waiting until we can.
And the storytime population is not that many.
Correct. But they're, it's happening at a lot of other libraries.
I just saw today outside, somebody's doing outside studying next week, maybe.
Yeah.
Forgot who.
But, you know, we would like to start it as soon as we can outside, whether or not it can be, it can't be under the pavilion because their turf hasn't been laid out. Or, you know, we can't be near on, they're going to have to reseed the lawn there. So if we're waiting for that to take effect before we start having people trounce in and out of the pavilion, then we could certainly have a very big bath lawn. So we could go back to doing it on the bath lawn like we did last year. But in terms of using this room, I don't think the staff are running, running back here wanting to start programs with 30 to 40 people in here.
What's the practical effect of, let's just say we make it from 10 to 25 and we look forward and we know that the numbers keep going and we get confidence in everyone else? And we say in two months, we're all set. What's the practical effect on the demand for the room that would mean a difference to people that would say, oh, I can't go because it's 10, or I can go because it's 25? Is there much of it?
I don't think at this point that there's much of a difference between that. I think, I mean, at least from what we're seeing and hearing, people would be fine if we opened up the door and said, eh, everyone come in here for an author visit with nobody wearing, you know, just, just come on in. Not everybody, but the majority of people, I think, would be okay now. I know our, the book group, which typically meets in here once a month, they started meeting remotely again, which for them is to discuss via email. They opted during COVID not to do Zoom or any sort of, any other platform, you know, for like Google Meets or anything. They just wanted to do it via email, which they did up until the fall. They started meeting back in here. They're typically a group of about eight people. But then in December, they opted to stop meeting indoors. So I think they only met here twice. And now they've, including this past meeting last week, they still opted to meet remotely through email and they're hoping to come back in April. But their group is so small.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Then it doesn't, at least the current group. I mean, I'm sure it could grow to be bigger than it is. You know, we have one Girl Scout troop that uses the room, but there are 10 people total with their troop leaders. The historical commission is using it this week and they're about 10 people. The department head meeting, if we were to host one at some point, that's where we'd be getting into higher numbers, but.
And would 25 cover that?
Yes.
I'd be comfortable raising it and be ready to raise it again or really remove them very shortly as the things progress and improve.
Well, especially after we, after we see what the outcome is from the selectmen's meeting on the optional masks. Because then it gives people, like you said, it's the, it's the option, whether or not. So it doesn't matter what the capacity is. It's sort of make a difference if you're, if you opt to wear one, then you can do so. So I think that's a good idea, raising it to.
To 25?
To 25.
Okay.
Which will at least give, you know, if the next department head meeting who has the option to be here, knowing right now until next week, they would all have to wear masks if you had one until then. And then we could, you know, like you said, revisit it.
So you want a motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we raise the capacity limit to 25.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, hold on, one second.
Now we have the directors in board.
Yeah, I'll go. A little quick here. I had mentioned that February, for being such a short month, we were only open 22 days that month. But it was our highest in terms of door count since September of 2021. We were super busy. I think that the winter reading program that we have, the incentive program with the beads certainly helped to get people in here weekly. Even if they weren't borrowing books, they were stopping at the desk for their bead and.
And we had some snow too.
Right. Coming in and doing the puzzles that we have, the mystery sticker puzzles. So I think that those contributed to helping the door count be as high as it was. And we've had our highest circulation since November of 2021. So higher than December and January. So that was, I just gave you that report right before the meeting started, but our circulation was 6,210 items in the month of February. So that's up significantly, of course, since February of 2021. But February of 2020 was one of our highest, I think it was the highest February ever. We were, we were off to such a good start that year. But in terms of comparing it to previous years, we're still behind 19 and 21, excuse me, 19 and 20. But we're above where we were 18 in the previous year. So certainly, people are coming back and using their library, which is lovely to see. We've already spoken about masks and we'll know more next Tuesday. I mentioned that interim town administrator Kelly has been here, had a little tour. We talked about the budget and we also discussed the library's capital plan, which is one of the reasons why windows came into play, which is why Mr. Merritt spoke about windows today. I do think that it would be good for us in a future meeting to review the capital plan. It was written in 2018 and, you know, it had a one-year plan, a five-year plan, and a 10-plus-year plan. And just to put it out there, the windows are on the 10-year-plus plan. It just, the windows came up because the interim town administrator asked about them. But we certainly don't need to do anything about them right now. We're already planning the 2022 summer reading program. So we've been working hard on that, particularly Sandra and Melissa. But we have a timeline set. We're offering a really full program throughout the whole summer, which will be great, I think. And we'll have more information on that very soon. The library technician two position, which is vacant from Melissa's promotion, that's been posted. And regarding the HVAC, I did place a call to air masters back at the end of February. Our thermostats have been flashing an error code on and off, which is something that had happened in June of 2021. It started doing it again. As I mentioned, it doesn't happen for days, but then it happens again. And more importantly, perhaps, it doesn't look like the system is shutting down with a schedule two. So they did send a technician out on March 1st, but he wasn't able to do much of anything. And we're still waiting on another technician to come out. The person who came on the first said that they would probably have to send out two technicians, one who would handle the equipment and another who would handle the software part of it, which is what I think the system is not speaking correctly to itself to turn off if somebody else would have to do it. They can't remote into the system. That was an issue quite a few years ago. Because we are on, you know, our equipment is off from sales and for privacy reasons, sales doesn't want an outside source logging into the system. So they can't remote in. Hopefully, they stop by soon. And then, you know, I really realized over the past couple of months since Melissa started in the tech position, there's a lot that could fall under that position's role and has in the past that someone who is new to the position just doesn't have enough time to do in 19 hours. So I've started a weeding project primarily in J nonfiction. We've totally outgrown that children's room already in terms of the size of our collection, which shouldn't be a surprise because that was predicted before we even moved here that we would quickly run out of space and we have. So I am weeding out materials that is somewhat outdated, some of it. And then some of it just hasn't circulated in quite a few years. Some of it hasn't circulated since before we moved here and maybe it shouldn't have been moved here, but it was. So, anyway, that's a pretty labor-intensive project. So Leslie's been helping me with that and we should be done this week. that, and we should be done this week. And the Friends are going to hold a small lobby book sale, and hopefully can sell some of that material. And other than that, the pajama drive is still on through March 31st. We did have a young patron set up a table one day in support of the pajama drive, and she handed out donuts to people who donated pajamas, and she promoted the program, and it was quite lovely. So if anyone would like to donate pajamas, it's all children's sizes through adult medium that they're looking for. And the pajamas, even though it's a statewide program, the pajamas stay local to this area and go to people who need them. Other than that.
Sounds good. We've been busy as usual.
Yep, that's for sure.
I wanted to let you know that the last snowstorm, I was thinking of you in the library, how, how did that go with the plowing?
Um, so that, on that day, we found out that, I guess it was, we knew that the town hall had a two-hour delay for opening. So they normally open at 8:00, which would put them at 10:00 to open. So I knew that as of 6:00 in the morning. So what it was understood by me was that we would also need to then be in for 10:00. So I was the only, aside from the custodian, who normally works 7:00 to 10:00. I had already bumped him to start at 10:00. I was scheduled to come in at 9:00, but I worked from home. And then I decided to work from home until 11:00, which was when the next staff member was also supposed to come in, just to give it a little more time, because Jen had driven by and knew that the lot hadn't been plowed yet. So I figured, well, let's just stay home till 11:00, or get here for 11:00. And at 10:15, the custodian let me know that the lot hadn't been plowed. That was when he got here. And it was still an active storm at that time, too, you know? So it was understandable that nobody got here to do the plowing. But I headed out anyway. I did let the staff member who was scheduled to come in for 11:00, I asked her not to come in until she heard from me, because I wanted to get here and figure out what was going on. So I got here a few minutes after 11:00, and the lot hadn't been done. So I called Town Hall and found out, after a few back-and-forth phone calls, that the DPW had said they wouldn't be able to get here until at least 3:00. So we had to close, normally, we're open on Fridays from 1:00 to 5:00, so we had to close the library for the day and the staff. You know, I ended up staying with the custodian until 1:00, so we both stayed till 1:00 and then left. So I, you have, I think the library's had a great relationship with the DPW, and there's, I think, you know, we, I think we all understand how hard the DPW works, and that they're really in a unfortunate situation this year, as it's been publicly said many times, they don't have enough fire drivers to handle it. And the roads, of course, are their most important priority, because even if the parking lot got done, if the road isn't safe, then what's, you know, the point? But my concern with that is just that it would have been great to know that before staff actually got here. And again, there's that communication gap of, you know, like, couldn't that have been determined before staff got here? And there's still uncertainty on who to call. We've sort of been given the impression I shouldn't be calling the DPW directly, which is why I called Town Hall when I got here, and they called the DPW. So there's, there's really been no change, I guess, in other words, in terms of not sure what the protocol should be, not sure what the chain of command is, the communication isn't clear, and, you know, it's, would love to see that get straightened out at some point. I did send an email that day to all the other directors in the network to figure out what they do. I'm still handing back from, responses have trickled in, you know, I think I've gotten maybe 10 responses so far, and everybody has a very different situation. Like, nobody's got the same situation. Some libraries are paying for plowing out of their budget, so it's not done by the town, it's done by a private company, the shoveling is done by a private company, and they're just budgeted that money to handle that. Other libraries just have the communication from the town administrator, and apparently it never fails that they're remembered and they get taken care of, and then other people are in the same, or a similar boat to us. It's not the same boat, but a similar boat. So, and then after the plowing was done, which pushed snow onto the walkways, of course, as it plows does, because it's the same way as it does to all of our driveways and all that, which is, again, understandable, because that's the nature of it. But as I mentioned, we did, my husband and I did come up here Friday night before it froze, so that we could clear the walkways, so that the staff wouldn't have an issue on Saturday morning, so that they'd be able to open the building. Because to me, the only other option would have been to call Jen and say, we're not opening the building. And to me, that's not an option. When we can open the building, we should open the building, and we'd already enclosed on Friday, so I didn't feel that that was the right decision either. But I'd also really prefer not coming here to do the shoveling. So, though I didn't do it, my husband did it, because I really am seriously dealing with a shoulder injury, and shouldn't be doing it. So. So that's where we're at. There's really no change. So, thanks for asking. And it's certainly not for lack of trying, because, you know, both Jen and Steve went with me to Town Hall and spoke about it, but.
But we're hoping.
Yeah.
That someday soon, no one will have to drive here to find out whether or not the, whether it's Dina, whether it's me, whether it's, you know, whoever, someone will not have to drive here to figure out whether or not it's been taken care of.
Right. The roads are terribly icy.
Well, it is.
It's a terrible storm.
And somebody just shouldn't, like, I just, I mean, if you know, if you know that it's not gonna be taken care of, that's absolutely fine.
It's fine.
No problem.
Right.
Just pick up the phone and say, hey, listen, I'm real sorry, but we're not gonna get to you till 3:00. No problem. We'll do what we gotta do. If we have to close, we'll close. If we have to delay, we'll delay. No problem. But we can't, you know, wonder what somebody's thinking, or what their, you know, agenda is, their schedule for doing. Like Dina said, you know, first you have the roads. I mean, if the roads aren't plowed, how can you expect a parking lot to be plowed? That's ridiculous. But I, I think it's definitely, it comes down to the communication and lack thereof. And I think nobody really has an answer as to what the answer is. So hopefully, we can work on that and see, you know, if we can get somewhere.
Yeah.
Sometime soon. But more importantly, let's hope for no more snow.
Yes.
For the time being, which would be fantastic.
So just don't look at the forecast for tomorrow.
I know. But I don't think, I think it's less than an inch, so we may be okay. Do we want to set our meeting time for next, the next meeting? So we can be looking at April 5th, which is a Tuesday, or the 12th, which is also a Tuesday, if we, if we want to stick with Tuesdays. Does Tuesdays work for everyone?
Tuesdays.
Usually does, yeah.
It does work.
Tuesdays are good. Okay. Does anyone have a preference, the 5th or the 12th?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, actually, now that I said it, I prefer the 5th, because I'm, that might be my only day to have off the week of the 11th would be the 12th, because I work that Saturday.
Okay.
So the 5th would be better on my end, if possible.
April 5th? And we still want to do 4 o'clock, so work for everyone, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And unless something, in the drastic nature changes, we will be meeting here in person. So we'll, we get, okay. So the next meeting will be April 5th, 4 o'clock, here in the library.
Good.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
No? Okay.